Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have of course myself, Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee, Councilman Cohen representing the 1st District, Councilwoman Porter representing the 10th District, and I'm sure we'll be joined by a few others later, representing the Office of the President, I've got Preston Lewis, and representing the Mayor's Office, I don't think we have representation here today. We've got two LOs we're going to be touching on, but before we do that, we're going to be getting into a bill. Oh, excuse me, we've got three bills today. First is, hold on, this is.
This is one, sorry, 230427.
Yep, forgive me, there's a, first, we're going to start with Bill 23-0427. And we're going to start with the other bill. One moment. All right, we're going to do this over. So we're going to start off, we have got three bills today. The first is Council Bill 23-0427, Baltimore Police Department Trauma-Informed Care Training. Then we will jump into our two LOs. The first is LO 23-0041 Legislative Oversight of the Baltimore City Fire Department Operations, and LO 21-0015 Baltimore City Fire Department EMS Stat and Operations. So we'll start off with the trauma-informed care training for the purpose of adding the Baltimore Police Department to the list of city agencies who are required to designate two agency staff members to participate in certain trauma-informed care trainings. This bill was introduced on September 28, 2023, and it's sponsored by Councilmember Cohen. I'll turn it over to Councilman Cohen for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all the agencies that are here today, as well as our partners that are non-governmental. And I really do want to just start by thanking the Health Department, the Library System, and Wreckin Park, who have been going through these trainings in trauma-informed care and really investing energy, personnel capacity into making them successful. I'm really proud of the work that we've been able to do, starting with Enoch Pratt and now with Recreation and Parks, to really try to address some of the trauma that we in city government, our city employees, experience, and then that we secondarily experience from the communities that we serve. And so, again, in 2020, we passed the Healing City Act that made Baltimore the first city in the United States to address trauma through legislation, and we have been going, agency by agency, we've been going really deep, spending about a year in real partnership with each agency. One of the things I'm proud of, and I'm going to at a later point introduce Kim Legree, but is that it's really been about communities coming into city government and teaching us how we can support ourselves, each other, and those that we serve. And that sort of community and government partnership has been just extraordinary. I'm proud to say that in 2023, Baltimore won the Robert Wood Johnson Culture of Health Prize for this work. Other cities have adopted it. Cincinnati is seeking to pass our bill, so is Philadelphia. And to this legislation, we are here today to talk about the Police Department, who, if you'll remember back in 2020, we did not have local control over BPD. Thus, we could not name them as one of the city agencies to get trained. But thanks to your leadership, Mr. Chair, and many other folks, we now sort of, mostly, do have local control of our Police Department, though there are some steps that still need to be taken. But it was important to me to make sure our police are part of this work in our city, both because officers, law enforcement officers, experience an inordinate amount of trauma. We know that mental health, depression, substance use is very, very high in this population. We know that officers see horrific scenes, and I remember not too long ago, being with Chief Wallace from the Fire Department, and some of the firefighters and police officers on Lombard Street where unfortunately, two young children perished, and just the traumatic impact that that had on the police officer that was there, and on our brave firefighters that were there as well. And so, getting our first responders trained and to be part of this work is extremely important to me. And so with that, Mr. Chair, I want to again thank you for your leadership in pushing to bring the Baltimore Police Department back under local control, and for holding this hearing as well.
Thank you, Councilman. We will turn it over to agency reports, starting first with the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the City Solicitor, and we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Baltimore City Health Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs Director from the Baltimore City Health Department. I am accompanied by my colleagues Ayesha Burgess, who is the Director of our Office of Youth and Trauma Services, and Derek Whiting, who is our Healing City Program Coordinator. We support this bill, and we stand by our agency report, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Baltimore City Police Department. You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. I'm joined by Chardelle Rose behind me, who is Director of our Victim Services Unit, and we stand by our report and we support the bill.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions of our city agencies? No. Oh, please, go ahead.
And this is mainly for the bill sponsor. I had a question about the Medical Subcommittee. How are you all integrating? So the only reason why I ask is I had a really great conference yesterday, it was a mobile health conference, and one of your attendees, I believe it was Jasmine Pope, she mentioned the Medical Subcommittee. How can we integrate, you know, programs and operations from the Health Department, some of our other hospital-based institutions, into kind of what you're doing with that Medical Subcommittee?
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilwoman Porter, and thank you for your leadership on public health. For those that, just some of the terminology, so one of the things that this legislation, the Healing City Act, did is it created a Trauma-Informed Care Task Force, which consists of folks from government, and then folks from outside of government, and we divided that task force into different subcommittees, one of which is the Medical Subcommittee. And our goal with that is really to bring both the Health Department, some of our medical institutions, and folks who are not traditional doctors, or nurses, or even medicine folks, into alignment to try to bring a trauma-informed approach in our communities. So one of the things that we've been working on is actually doing some mental health care in churches and in barber shops, and that is in partnership with Johns Hopkins, Navartis, University of Maryland, one of the leaders in our city, Pastor Terrace King, and others. And it's been just a great partnership. But to directly answer your question, Councilmember Porter, I think that we want to make sure that all of our medical institutions, all of the hospitals and the providers are all in alignment, because Baltimore is a healthcare town, right? I mean, we have some of the best health institutions in the world, and yet we also have some of the greatest health disparities in the world in our city. And so, making sure all those folks from that task force are working together is critically important, and again, I appreciate the question.
Thank you. Any further questions? I wanted to acknowledge Councilman Costello, who's joined the meeting, and also Councilman Burnett, who's joined the meeting. All right, Councilman, I understand there's a presentation.
Yeah, so if it's okay with the Chair, I was hoping to bring up Kim Legree, who heads the Work for Healing City, and then to hear from Ms. Ayesha as well, and then Jocia from Recreation and Parks.
Okay. Please use the microphone, turn it on. Is there a slideshow, presentation, or just, okay, excellent.
So good afternoon, Chair Conway, Councilman Cohen, other council members, and city agency leaders. I am Reverend Kim Legree, CEO of Healing City. I am also the former Assistant Director for the Baltimore City Health Department's Office of Youth and Trauma Services, as well as the former Community Policy Manager for BPD. So Healing City is well-positioned at this time with its leadership. We have grown our staff from one, starting with me last year, to 11 now. We are well-positioned and fully understand the fabric of this city, and how public health and public safety is integrated, where the gaps are, and where the needs are. We leave with compassion, and we really appreciate all of the initial efforts to bring the Elijah Cummings Healing City Act to fruition. Currently, we have had major success with Enoch Pratt Library Systems having fully trained their staff in overhauling that policy to go from zero tolerance to being fully welcoming to those that are living with homelessness, living with addiction, and we have seen that with the support of former CEO Heidi Daniels. We have seen the success of that. They really were brave to pioneer that as our first agency to be trained, and this year, we are pleased to be continuing working with the Health Department in the training of Baltimore City Recreation and Parks, and we are seeing similar successes. Our youth and families, I am a Baltimore native, having lost my brother in 2015, fully understand the impact of not just homicide in this city, but also having parents addicted to drugs, understanding the impact of overdose. So we are fully committed and understand what is needed and what it takes, and there is an inextricable link between public health and public safety, and we have the opportunity right now to truly, truly address the gaps, right? Continue building bridges. We have amazing partnerships and relational equity with members of BPD, so proud of success with the consent decree, and I'm really urging us collectively to continue building past any potential conflicts, any potential negativity on our city. We are winning, and it is time that we close those gaps. So we're really looking forward to supporting Baltimore City Police Department with their current successes, right? Building on that relational equity with its new leadership, also bridging that gap with the Fire Department. Once again, our ability to effectively address homicides, non-fatal shootings, as well as fatal and non-fatal opioid overdoses is going to take us all working together. So once again, Healing City is extremely proud of the work that we get to lead. We oversee the implementation through funding from the Mayor's Office, and we are looking forward to continuing that partnership with the Health Department, as well as others. So thank you so much. We look forward to the next steps, and see you on the other side.
Thank you. Anyone else? The right button.
Good afternoon. And so, as Councilwoman Cohen mentioned earlier.
If you could introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. My name is Ayesha Burgess. I'm the Director of the Office of Youth and Trauma Services at the Baltimore City Health Department. It is an honor to present before this council, and I wanted to just reiterate that the Baltimore City Health Department stands by our position in support of adding BPD to the list of agencies to be trained on trauma-informed care. Just wanted to tell you a little bit about the process and some of the partnerships. Baltimore City Health Department has subcontracted with Sage Wellness, who has really been taking the lead in implementing the Trauma-Informed Care Training for city agencies, and that is determined by a steering committee that has been formed in terms of developing a schedule for the agencies listed in the legislation and when we should engage them. The initial process starts with a needs assessment to really understand the organizational needs, and some of the service provision issues that are related to their exposure to trauma. And from there, we administer this needs assessment, schedule a meeting with the agencies to talk through the logistics of the training, and specific topics that they like for us to cover in the training, but want to reiterate that the training is standardized for all agencies and customized only at the level that we receive the needs assessment and look to address specific needs for those agencies. The training consists of five to six modules based on Trauma 101, which really gives a brief understanding of trauma and the impact on brain development. We then assess whether or not an organization is in need for a deep dive, which really speaks to some of the other modules that cover grief and loss, mindfulness, prevention of burnout, as well as restorative practices in youth mental health. And so, we are just really excited about being a part of this initiative, and really want to emphasize the importance of having many agencies who directly interface with youth and families to be trained, and it is really timely that BPD is being added to the legislation. I don't think any other organization or entity in the city interfaces with the community as much as they do. And as much as Councilwoman Cohen mentioned earlier, the horrific events that they are exposed to, we see this as an opportunity to not only support our law enforcement officers around their emotional well-being, but also in how they service the community and respond to these incidents. So thank you for giving me the opportunity just to reiterate what was already spoken.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Council. I'm Jocia Smith, the Chief of Staff at Baltimore City Recreation and Parks, and I wanted to come today to kind of give a perspective of what it means for the agency. So this was no small undertaking. We have over 900 employees, and to have them committed to a years-long training that was not optional, showed the commitment of the agency to kind of look and dig deep to make sure we are supporting our staff members. It's not lost upon us, the trauma that our staff members endure serving our communities, right? So when there is a young person that's lost, more likely than not, they're connected to one of our rec centers. And then if you couple that with just workplace trauma, right? Wreckin Parks has been an agency that until recently, under the direction of Director Moore and myself, that we've stayed. We've been here for six years. Before then, there was a bit of a revolving door of leadership. That causes its own amount of workplace trauma. So when you couple those things, we were perfectly situated to submit ourselves to this training. What I can tell you is that it's impacting the way we show up at work, right? We are approaching conflict and problem-solving from a much more restorative space. The restorative circles have been a godsend when things happen, because we're humans and conflict happens. It's changing the way we approach hiring, the way that we approach when young people do have behavioral issues at our rec center. So I wanted to come today to just say that it is worth the effort, it's worth the investment in our people. When we talk about grief, we talk about just healing exercises. I had an employee who was an internal candidate who was going for an interview, and she was just full of nerves. I told her, "You can stop and say, 'Hey, I need a moment to take a deep breath. Remember what we learned in training?'" And she was able to deploy that tactic during her interview. So it is having real-life impact on the agency, on the way that we just think about how we respond to things that happen. So I would implore BPD to really consider it. It is a commitment, right? You are taking people off tasks to submit themselves to the training, but we have had nothing but success from the training. It's impacting the way that we lead, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to open up for public testimony. If there are any folks here looking to testify, we're going to afford you two minutes. Right now, we have Aurelia Gavins signed up to testify. Aurelia Gavins? All right. If you wish to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function. We'll unmute you and allow you to testify. All right, seeing no testimony, we're going to close public testimony. Any questions, concerns? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the bill as favorable. All right, moved by Porter, seconded by Burnett, Conway, yes, Porter, Cohen?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Glover absent, Ramos absent, and Costello.
Yes.
All right, this moves to second reader. Thank you, Councilman. We'll move on to our next LO for the day. Thank you, folks. Our next bill is LO 23-0041 Legislative Oversight Baltimore City Fire Department and Operations for the purpose of inviting representatives of the Fire Department to discuss operations for the Fire Department, including apparatus, equipment, hiring, and safety. And what I'll do, actually, I'll just go ahead and read both LOs in, since EMS is right under Fire Department. That second LO is 21-0015 Baltimore City Fire Department EMS Stat and Operations for the purpose of requesting that the Fire Chief present information to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee evaluating EMS data and operations. So I'll hand off to you, Chief.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is James Wallace. I'm the Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department. First, sir, thank you for the opportunity to be here today for myself and my command staff to be able to present to you. We're going to start off with the Fire Stat portion. I have multiple members in my command staff, including my Assistant Chiefs, as well as their direct subordinates. They each will take their respective service and report to you and your committee. My ask of them would be, as they start off just to introduce themselves, but at this point, I'll turn it over to the first presenter.
Assistant Chief Dante Stewart, Chief Operations.
Chief Matt, you can go ahead in advance to Community Risk Reduction.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Christopher Case. I'm Assistant Chief of Support Services. Working with me, I have Deputy Chief Jason Goodwin, Deputy Chief of Logistics, and the Director of IT, Information, Technology, and Planning, also Fire Communications Director Shante Hart. This slide will show the apparatus currently on order. As you see, we have a good amount coming in, also a few of them that are in the procurement process right now. And one note on this would be, the entire EMS transport fleet will be totally replaced this year. And this slide will illustrate our green initiative to start receiving hybrid and fully-electric vehicles. We have 15 hybrid SUVs in the pipeline right now. They're going to start to get delivered next week. Most of them will be our fire prevention people, and we have two fully-electric vehicles that are on order now, and they should be coming in within a month. Also, just a note, I had a meeting with Fleet yesterday, and we have, I requested several more quotes on electric vehicles, fully-electric and hybrid vehicles, to start this initiative with the Fire Department. Then we go to station construction renovation. We got a $10 million grant from the state to construct and renovate two stations. The one station, it's a full construction with Station Engine 274315, Manassota Avenue. That's in the design phase right now. We've been having meetings for the past few months over with the design team, and that's well into the design phase right now. Station Engine 14 on Holland Street, that's the design phase, has been completed for a full renovation, a total, full bottom-top station renovation. We're just awaiting access to the funding from the state right now. We're working with the Department of General Services on that. And the station renovations that we're going, that right now is in the process of doing with Engine 2 and Engine 52 right now, they're all going to include lead pain abatement, individual sleeping quarters for the members, gender-neutral bathrooms, cancer reduction program, and green energy improvements. Engine 2 is probably about 80% complete now, and Engine 52, the design phase has been completed, we're just doing the permitting process and a few, trying to get some easement And these are the stations that we are planning on doing full renovations on once these other stations have been completed. Fire Communications Bureau, this slide illustrates our compliance with NFPA, I'm sorry, let me get to it here. NFPA 1710, where percentage of calls dispatched within 64 seconds. Right now, we're at 87%. They want us at 90%, but we are having staffing issues right now. We hired four new operators that started on Wednesday of this week, and then we have, we're starting interviews on the 27th of this month for more to fill some of the vacancies. And the calls, percentage of calls dispatched within 106 seconds, we're at 95.63%, and they want us at 95, so we're meeting that.
I'm Tanya Ruddy, the 911 Director. For 911 Emergency Call Center, in the fourth quarter, 911 received a total of 330,560 calls. 74% of the calls were answered within 15 seconds during this period. Throughout 2023, there were 1,372,000 calls totaling with an 80% answer rate time within 15 seconds. There was eight new hires in December 2023, contributing to the ongoing efforts to enhance our workforce. We're currently collaborating with DHR to ensure continuous recruitment process for 911. From September to December, we received 160 applicants, indicating a strong entrance in joining our team. Interviews for 911 positions will take place on April 4, 2024, at the War Memorial Building. This is for all qualified applicants who apply between the September and December 2023 period. Also, to bolster our recruitment efforts, 911 and Baltimore City Fire Department is partnered with various cities' agencies, including MoED, DHR, the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, and Mayor's Office of Performance Innovation. In March of 2024, Baltimore Crisis Response, Inc., has hired a behavioral health clinician for the 911 call center. Training for the clinician will commence in the mid-April, enhancing our capabilities to address mental health aspects of emergency calls. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak on the operations section for the Fire Department. I'm Deputy Chief John Ide, and my topics that I'm going to cover today are the activities, training, response data, and ongoing initiatives for the operations section in the fourth quarter. When speaking of suppression operations, we staff daily 32 engines, 17 trucks, three squads, seven specialty units, and six battalion chiefs. The first slide here gives the daily activities for all of our units. Monday through Sunday, we cover a lot of training activities, both in the Fire Academy and also at the company level in their respective districts. I'll just go through real quick and highlight a couple of them. Mondays, we do hydrant inspections, which we actually visually inspect twice a year, so the city hydrants get covered semi-annually by the companies. On the Tuesday and Thursdays, you can see, we do pre-fire planning. That's pre-fire planning for buildings, which are entered into a database and can be brought up by the incident commanders. On Wednesdays, we do- On Wednesdays, we do the unsafe vacant surveys. That actually covers the TES zones, along with inspection districts to identify code x-rays in unsafe dwellings. And Saturdays is our Saturday safety sweeps, which is a big day for us. We get in and do some safety inspections for the residents, install smoke detectors. And as you see, on Sunday, we do battalion training. And each day, in addition to these, we do company training at the company level to train our new members. The last line we added in on this section shows the additional training that we're actually focusing on out at the Fire Academy, which is relatively new within the past two years. Some of this stuff is even newer. But we've always done two-in-one training on Mondays and Fridays, which cover a wide topic of tactics and firefighting topics. One of the newer sections that we added is the Focus Lab, which we have fire and EMS officers. They're doing simulated mock emergencies, and they have benchmarks for pass/fails, and they're acting as an incident commander. So we're starting with our lower-level officers, which will be coming. Right now, we're focusing mainly on our fire captains and above. On Thursdays, or we do the correction, on Wednesdays, we're doing truck training, which concentrates on search and rescue force, pluntery and new equipment. And finally, on Fridays, at the Fire Academy, we do ongoing bailout training. We have bailout systems now that were purchased recently, and we're doing refresher training on that if firefighters need to self-educate out of the dwellings or a building from an elevated platform. Next slide. Those daily activities are all entered into a database, Fire Records, and this slide shows the Fire Records program. It shows the dashboard for that. I'm just going to highlight a few things in the upper right corner. Our units inspected twelve thousand, nine hundred and forty-five total inspections for the fourth quarter. We inspected over eight thousand smoke alarms during the bottom period. That's on the bottom left. We installed nine hundred and one smoke alarms, and then we also identified or re-inspected seven hundred code x-ray addresses for this period.
I've got a question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Because I think one of the potentially most effective things that we can do to prevent fires is, of course, helping folks install the fire detectors, smoke alarms. I think the question, though, is how much of the city are we actually able to cover? And noting that we're not going to probably get to every door, how do we prioritize the neighborhoods, the homes that are more prone to have either no smoke alarm or a smoke alarm that no longer works, so it's no longer effective?
Yes, sir. Thanks for that question. As far as operationally concerned, we go out and actually hit the doors, and we have grid maps where our districts are covered by the respective companies. And I know it's a multifaceted level of communications to the community, and I believe Chief Wallace and the PIO is working and has continued to work on spreading the word by commercials, public safety announcements. So the numbers that we're reflecting here are actually the district inspections or the three-one-one requests. So anytime that we have a three-one-one request, we have units go out and install those smoke detectors. So I think to keep on with the public safety announcements, the three-one-one initiatives, and us tracking our districts and making sure that we hit every house is a multifaceted approach. And does that answer your question?
It does partially. As you were talking, it made me think, because you guys were recently in my district, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it on that day, but it makes me think about what data we have that can help us identify where we're going to have the most effect and greatest yield for our limited amount of time. And so if we know, for instance, that if we know that a home has not been sold in a long amount of time, you would presume that there's a chance that the person who's living there has been living there so long that maybe they're not thinking about the smoke detectors, or it's someone's been renting for a long time. And if that can in some way let us know, as the Fire Department, that we might just want to check in on that home, we have some of that data, probably at the housing, you know, or the city has data on home sales and transfers. I don't know how nice the data is, or how good the data is on rentals, but you would suspect if you can identify that new tenants, new homeowners have not come in recently, there's a chance that those smoke detectors are older than, what is it, three or so years? So just trying to think of how we can be smarter about our limited resources and time, because at the end of the day, you know, we fight fires, but that's only reacting to a problem that has already happened. The only way for us to get ahead of it is to have people, you know, know in advance what steps to take so that they don't end up having a fire in their home, or if there is a fire in their home, they immediately know.
And thank you for that, Councilman. I think two points that I can make that we're actually working on right now that are right in line with what you're saying. First is through water bill distribution. We're actually working on an insert now to go out in a very near-future water bill. And a lot of this, we ourselves identified after the fire in your district, as well as the one in Councilman Cohen's district. We recognize that there may be new tenants, whether they're new homeowners or even renters, that may not be aware of the status of smoke alarms inside of their homes, and that we need to outreach to them. I think historically, we've done a good job in just promoting smoke detectors, right? But can we do better in promoting, do your smoke detectors really work? What's the status of the smoke detectors? I've found oftentimes, we go places, and people may not realize they even have hardwired smoke detectors, and they think that hardwired is the solution to the problem. Well, it can be, as long as there's functioning electricity, but when the power goes out, they rely on that battery backup. So I think it's an educational piece, to your point, one that we agree with. And I think in the short term, with regard to water bills, I believe that's going to help if we can get those mailers out. The PIO, or our PIO, excuse me, is also working with several new stations locally to do some PSA work. We're going to, and hopefully, in the very near future, we're going to really be able to, you know, to kind of blitz the airways, if you will, with these PSA announcements so that we can reach, you know, some of our remotest residents, right? And try to hit it from all angles. We're very active with social media, but I think we need to expand out into our TV media partners, and certainly with DPW's help through water bills.
Yeah, I think there's certainly a lot of opportunity with getting media and the message out there, but I think there's a lot to be said by having us knock a door and literally check ourselves. I think that's a great program that we do, and I think can be really, really helpful, but we don't have the capacity to knock every door. We don't have enough smoke detectors to provide them for every floor and every home. And so how do we prioritize the folks that are most likely to need it based on where we see fire fatalities or where we know someone may have lived there for such a long time that maybe their smoke detector is outdated? So just trying to be smarter about how we use our resources. Councilman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on this same topic, you know, I think another piece of this, too, is making sure we are doing, DHCD is doing housing inspections regularly. Unfortunately, what we saw in my district, and I want to thank Chief Wallace and the Fire Department for just some incredibly heroic work that went on that night, and thank you for calling and for me being out there, but, you know, the rental license had lapsed. And as a result, my understanding is that it was a non-working smoke detector, and I think that unfortunately is too common in our city. And so, again, I think just having capacity in DHCD to do inspections, and some legislation I'm working on is, when a license lapses, there should be some kind of trigger for both the landlord and then also the city to know that that's happened so that we're not just waiting for something catastrophic to occur.
I appreciate it. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're going, chief? Has there, just wanted to note the smoke alarms. I know one of the things that has come up in my district and other parts of the city is that there's sort of an over-representation in fire deaths for older adults. And I also just think about folks who are, you know, may have some sort of disability, may not be able to hear a smoke alarm. Has the department tried to pursue funding to target that particular population? There's, I know special alarms that can be attached to bed, bed frames and other things.
Yeah, and we actually have, so they're referred to as bed shaker alarms. We actually have those. That's a program that needs to be advertised more broadly, you know, to, you know, straight to your point, and that is part of the media campaign, to actually make not only the end users aware, but make physicians aware as well, because I believe there's a piece to that by virtue of the grant process, that we have to have certification by a physician or maybe some type of prescription by a doctor. I'm not fully aware of the program, but there is a piece in there where there's a physician involved that actually says, yes, I have a patient who is hearing impaired and, you know, would need the assistance of this. We have those devices. We have actually given some of those devices out, but again, we do need to touch more of the public, and we have made that a part of the talks that we're having right now with media outlets to be able to include that as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you, sir. Next slide is suppression unit call volume. This is for all call types with the suppression units we're responding to. You can see it's a pretty even bar graph here, about three thousand calls we do monthly, and, or about a hundred daily, and there's real significant changes. You'll see like a little bit of an uptick, maybe in the summer months, for our EMS calls go up and our standbys will go up for that. Next slide. Fire incidents, structure fire dispositions. This is when we respond to a structure fire, what the actual disposition of it is. As you can see, the IA, or AI, I'm sorry, is the actual instance that a fire did not occur, and that's the first number, but we had actual fires, which is the AF, a hundred and twenty-eight total for this quarter, where there was an active fire that needed extinguishment. Next bar graph shows a working fire, which the incident commander requested additional help, twenty-nine total times for this quarter. And then we look at multi-alarms, which are two alarms or greater, and that's when the fire extension can't be controlled by the on-scene units, and we request additional help. That number is a little bit down from the previous quarters. We've had five multi-alarms in this quarter. Next slide, please. Fire response times for all calls. This is actually the response times from the time of dispatch till they get on the scene. We're, again, consistent through all quarters, usually in to the location within five minutes from dispatch. Next slide, please. Fire response time to suppression calls. This is the actual response time just to specific call type of a suppression call type. This is just displayed in a different way. It's in a bar graph, and then on the left-hand side, it's how many responses, and then the bottom is for the timeframe of the first arriving unit to arrive. Again, our average is three to six minutes, which is hitting our target. Next slide, please. The next slide is the fire response time just to structure fires themselves. And again, the bar graph is showing that our call response times from the time they've been dispatched fall within the two to six-minute mark from the time the unit gets on the scene. Next, please. Fire response time for EMS call types. This is when we're dispatched to an EMS car. And again, you'll see, we respond to a significant amount of EMS standbys and support, as indicated on the response totals on the left-hand side. It also shows our commitment to when we have delays in having EMS transport units to the scene, whether it's hospital delay or an abundance of calls within a certain timeframe, that we do have a suppression unit on scene within a five-minute mark to provide care. Next slide. This is turnout times. This is actually when the call is dispatched till the time the fire engine or fire truck is rolling out of the station. And as you can see, this is a large dataset. This is for all the call types, and we get out in a majority of time, fifty seconds or less, the firefighters are on the wagon getting out the door. The next slide indicates a little bit smaller dataset. This is analyzing our turnout time to structure fires, and you can see, the highest two bars are showing a twenty to thirty-second timeout turnout time. And as you can see, both these slides indicate that the members are getting out the door quickly when they are dispatched. Next slide. Fire incidents. This is the occupancy of actual fires inside of structures, and with the occupancy we were looking at, I highlighted the three districts that had the highest number of structure fires in our districts, District Nine, Seven, and Eight. As you can see, the districts like Nine and Seven, we have a high number of vacant fires that challenge, you know, our department still. And I remember, I look back at the council hearing last time, and Councilwoman Ramos was pointing out that over half of our structures are either vacant or code x-rays, and these statistics show similar numbers. The occupied dwellings, we had sixty-six fires, and the vacant code x-ray, this quarter, we had fifty-nine. As I said, it challenges our department. We've adjusted our policy and procedures, and our incident commanders are still finding people inside of, you know, the vacant dwellings. So it's a split-second decision that they have to make on determining whether, you know, how effective they're going to be and how safe they can be to get these citizens out.
Yeah, I just had a quick question on that. So with so many of the fires being started in vacant structures, you mentioned about whether or not there are people in those vacant structures. I'm curious, you know, things don't spontaneously start a fire. There's typically something that leads or causes that fire. How often are we sort of finding it's started by someone living in a vacant structure or something like that?
I don't have specific numbers for you. I know there has been some tracking going on, but we can get back to you on that.
That would be really helpful.
And absolutely, there's, it happens quite often that we're encountering that. Like you said, there's a fire being started in these structures mostly by the human factor, and you have to expect that there's possibly someone in there.
Not to make this problem bigger than it already is, but it seems to me that the lack of housing leads to people who are unhoused, and then they try to live in a vacant building, and in order to stay warm or to cook or whatever it may be, they're starting fires. Those fires lead to a lot of damage, so just...
Absolutely. We find out a lot in the wintertime. Yes, sir. I'll follow back up with you on that one.
Thank you.
Next slide. Suppression unit responses. This is for all incidents that the Fire Department responded to by district, and District Eleven is the highest with five thousand, eight hundred and sixteen calls for service, and then District Nine and Twelve, which both have a little bit over forty-five hundred calls. Next slide. Just wanted to pause here for a quick second and talk about some initiatives that are ongoing and things that Chief Wallace has implemented and give you some progress reports. And I really concentrated on three. The Fire Recruit Program, we have a fifth person riding along, as I said, in the third quarter, and that was the first round of ride-alongs. And what it is, is we currently have the second round of recruits riding in fire suppression spots as an extra person, and it gives us an opportunity to supervise and mentor the new probationary members at the company level to make sure they're comfortable and identify any deficiencies or any retraining that might need to take place prior to them operating independently. So we do five shifts on the engine, five shifts on the truck, and we've received a lot of good feedback. It boosts their confidence level, and it makes for a really smooth transition when they are operating independently. So it's well-received by the department. It's a big benefit, and again, we're doing our second round of that, and I think with Chief Wallace's approval, we'll continue that. The second thing is the Active Shooter Rescue Task Force Training. It's joint training with BPD and... It's joint training with BPD and Fire Department. And it's a two day course. It involves classroom and practical evolutions. And the training allows us to prepare and respond and mitigate for like an active shooter incident if it were to occur. And recently, we started partnering with the universities in the area and the colleges. So within the city limits and they've reached out to us. Our next training will be a cop in on April 12th and 13th. And the colleges actually are participating with their security personnel and administration too. So we're interactive, both BPD, Fire Department and the, actually the educational institutions. And then finally, I want to speak on something that for the fourth quarter, we reached our one year anniversary, which is the battalion tech program. Each, each battalion chief or incident commander is assigned a battalion tech during their shift. And it's in compliance with NFP 1710, which is imperative that we reduce the saturation of the incident commander when they're running these incidents. And with the battalion tech, it allows for safer incident management, accountability and basically a safer fire ground because you have a second set of eyes with the chief there responding and communicating with them. They have several critical responsibilities that we've identified and are putting into a policy. And it's, they're responsible for driving, which seems not that important, but we had incident commanders in the past battalion chiefs driving and trying to multitask, looking at the computer. So the battalion tech is getting the address info, they're tracking the best route, they're helping the BC to concentrate on developing an incident action plan while they're responding. They're directed, battalion chiefs can direct the units for best access. And then they're also getting, be able to get on the, our MDTs and look at any of the CAD notes for code X-rays, vacant dwellings or any, any hazards that they might be coming into. It also allows them to, the battalion techs are actually setting up a physical command post and they're serving as the accountability officer. So they're not only tracking the people's name, they're tracking the functions, where the unit is, where that person is and where they move around on the fire ground. Safety, they serve as a second set of eyes to the incident commander and they're, they're to notify the incident commander immediately of any missed radio traffic or anything that they see that doesn't look safe. And also they, they do some, a lot of administrative duties too in the battalion office, preparing, training and doing different activities to improve the efficiency of the office. A majority of the line of duty death reports throughout the country, this position is one of the top recommendations and if it's not already implemented. So we have implemented it back in December of 2022 and we've come around one full year and we've really developed the program quite well. And it's extremely important. You can see a big difference and a benefit for the incident commanders and overall scene command. And I'm hopeful that Chief Wallace is successful in getting the financial support that we need to get the program and keep it going. That's all I have. Our members work extremely hard. They're doing a lot of activities, a lot of training, community education, and they, they're handling a lot of high call volumes. You know, it's the top, some of them in the top in the state and also nationwide. And we give them a lot of credit for the work they do every day and I appreciate the, your committee and the council and the mayor's office for, for supporting us. And that's the conclusion of my presentation.
Thank you. Open up to questions. You mentioned that we've been doing, we've added the battalion techs, we've been seeing the returns and that's great. And that there is, there's, is there going to be a request in this coming budget to continue that program or is that something we should keep an eye out for?
That was built in as an enhancement to this budget, yes. It was an enhancement request.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. No, it's good to hear. And I'm glad, I'm glad that we're, we're getting that done and continuing to, you know, perfect our art.
And some of the things that you don't see with that specific program is that it develops the younger officers and the younger members. It gets them to take a look at the supervisory levels of what they're dealing with and it, it prepares them to move up within the department. So it's, that's like a hidden benefit.
Got it. Councilwoman.
Thank you. I did have a question about just training and the use of technology. How are you incorporating or even discussing drone and AI technologies to kind of help and assist in some of these fire suppression efforts?
So we're, we're working right now to actually build a drone program. We were, we were on a pathway along with other city agencies, BPD, DHCD. We were, we were on a pathway, however, we, we had to stop that pathway for a little while, but we're back on again.
Great.
What we're doing right now is we're, we're building a drone program around really two, two primary functions. One, pre-fire inspections.
Yes.
A drone would allow us to, to fly the, the device down the street and get a look at the front of the buildings. If there's an alleyway or a sub street, we could fly back up, get, get a look at all the backsides of the buildings. And then finally, a piece of those inspections, which is very, very difficult for us, is to get above the dwellings, right? You can, you can stand in the street and, and look at, at vacant homes oftentimes and if they're not dilapidated, at least from the front of the rear, you may not realize that they may not have a roof on them. They may have a roof that's sagging. So that's, that, that is a piece of inspection that to, to us is extraordinarily important because as we know, these roofs will come down on us really quick. The second piece of that that's very critical is infrared technology that, that drones, drones would bring to the table. So during times of vacant dwelling fires, even hazardous materials incidents where if we had a derailment, we did not want to send crews down range, a drone with infrared technology would actually see a, an exothermic reaction going on, chemical reaction that we may not be able to see with our eyes. So back to the structure fires, we, with infrared technology could really see where the heaviest pockets of fire are inside of a dwelling, oftentimes without having, having to put people inside. So we recognize where this technology will help us and we are definitely going in that direction with, with drones. Right now, we're looking at Chief Case four to, four to six drones, is that nine?
Nine.
So, yeah, we're, we'd like them to be with our safety officers, our chiefs, our special operations people, those key people that we need on the, you know, key incidents to keep things safe and functional.
Okay.
And I'm, I was gonna, there was a second part to your, to your question about AI and if there's any opportunity for AI to help with.
Right now, I honestly don't have an answer for you. Director Hart was called away for family emergency today. She has all that. I know they're working over there, her and her staff.
Okay. That works perfect. Thank you.
All right, we'll continue on.
Good afternoon. I'm Deputy Chief Shawnee from Office of the, of the Fire Marshal. The Office of the Fire Marshal is responsible for providing fire prevention, fire investigation and educational resources. The primary function of the office are listed in those bulleted items. In quarter four, we conducted 3,190 inspection, 688 plan reviews, 50 fire safety talks and fire drills, as well as 161 fire investigations. Beginning on March the 18th, our fire investigation unit was relocated to the Police Department headquarters and now shares the same office space as the Police Department's arson unit. This combined team will be now known as a joint fire investigative task force. Also not listed on the slide, we handled 19 fire code violations in quarter four. All those violations were handled in less than five days. The total number of complaints we handled in the calendar year was actually 72 and we've addressed all our complaints within 82%. That's all I have. Any questions?
Okay.
Yes.
Councilwoman.
I have a quick question. Chief Eames, I think you do a yeoman's job every time I email you. You get out there, your inspectors get out there. I'm concerned about your capacity and I have shared that on a number of occasions. I think that you need more inspectors. If we are ever to account for the growing population and economic development in the city, your office is going to need more inspectors. And so Chief Wallace, can you speak to how we're expanding that office? Is that included in this year's budget for more positions for Chief Eames?
So we're, we're actively seeking to reclassify positions to civilian positions. Now, it's, it's not a large number of reclassifications, however, and Chief Eames's office certainly falls in at the very top of this. There are several areas of the Fire Department right now, including the Fire Academy, our sixth floor HR operation, Chief Eames's office, where we see the need, but we also see the value of reclassifying positions and making them civilian positions. The, we're working that way with Chief, Chief Eames's office. We've already got one in the works for Chief Shiloh at the Fire Academy. But that also gives us the ability to, to seek out maybe retired inspectors, state inspectors, local inspectors on, on a contractual basis who already know the codes, they know the laws, they know the routines, they know how to go in and do effective inspections. So we're moving in that direction right now, but it's, it's time consuming because we've got to go through class and comp in, in order to reclassify positions.
So where are we in that process? Are they in this year's budget? Where, I mean, are?
I don't, so we want to reclassify existing positions. We, we know where we have uniform positions we're not going to fill. That's the reclassification process that we're working through right now.
Okay. So there are no new additional positions. So how many from those reclassifications are going to go to Chief Eames's department?
There's a, there's a plans manager, there were plans reviewers that we're, we're also looking at now too. We'll have to give you a number on that. I, I don't, in the interest of accuracy, don't have that right off the top of my head, but we will send you that very shortly.
Okay, thank you.
If you mind, Chief Wallace, I think your question, we have two vacant positions in our plan reviews part of this office. So that's our two vacancies right there.
Okay, and two vacancies. And how many, how many positions or how many people do you need as far as for, from a capacity perspective? How many people do you need in order to?
So we put in, in enhancement. We want one additional.
One additional.
Yeah, one additional fire inspector.
All right.
As a clarifying question, what is our, I don't see it here, what is our typical turnaround time for inspections? How, how quickly are we able to respond to?
It depends on what type of inspections. It's multiple types. If it's a general use and occupancy inspection, we can turn that around in 10 days or less. Now, if you're talking about more technical inspection, a fire alarm, an ancillary system, because of, of lack of manpower, that could be two weeks up to a month. So it just really just depends.
Got it. Okay, I'm sorry. Councilman, go on.
Mr. Chair, just completely concur with my colleague about the capacity constraints in your office and do want to shout out Chief Eames, who I think really does yeoman's job of being responsive, but there is often a bottleneck and it is a challenge for the city. And so I would just say, like the civilianization, but I think it's also going to be important to maintain pay parity because I think what we've seen, let's talk about housing inspectors on that side, is housing inspectors in the city of Baltimore make $10,000 less than they do in Anarundel County. And so I think we are training people to be housing inspectors and then losing them at a ridiculously fast clip. And I would just hope that on the, you know, Fire Marshal side, that we don't repeat that and that we, you know, pay folks enough to make it worth their while. That's, that's all. I just, I would please keep the pay high enough that it is worth it for folks to do it because I think we need the capacity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Let's continue.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, council members present. My name is Thomas Tosh, I'm Assistant Chief Administration Member Services. Today I have with me Ms. Lee, Captain Robinson from Administration, and our Director of Training, Deputy Chief Laura Shiloh. You go to the next slide. This is a snapshot of our current vacancies. EMT firefighter vacancies have come down because we currently have a class of EMT firefighter recruits in, emergency medical technicians and paramedics. There are frontline EMS providers that take care of our medic units and our ambulances driving. We currently have a, a process moving forward for hiring them as well. Pump operators, emergency vehicle drivers or internal promotions. Fire dispatchers, we just onboarded five, I believe, or four, and we have some vacancies and we're beginning the process for interviews with that as well. 911 operator, that's Director Reddick's shop as well. We're assisting her. Those interviews begin at the beginning of April, as she stated during her presentation. So this is recent and pending hires. So the current class 2401, Chief Shiloh has them divided up and she'll speak on that later in her section, into two sections, 2401A and 2401B. Fire dispatchers was four that we hired on the 13th. Paramedic and EMTs were actually currently in the PAT, in the preplacement process. So we're cold calling them, the, the individuals that have been credentialed, identified as having credentials for paramedic ALS or EMTB certifications, they're coming out, they're doing their physical ability testing and then they'll get notified to go to, once they get through that, to go to PSI for their medical end of it to get cleared. If they have an issue with the PAT test, they'll be able to come back out and work through the cycles of the test and work on passing it with a, with a return date. Our OEM section as well, they've got interviews scheduled, they've actually promoted a logistics section chief. We're getting ready to post the lieutenant for OEM. And then we have interviews pending for the 911 and the OEM operations and the fire administrator dispatcher. You go to the next slide. So this is the upcoming high school and career day visits that we've attended and are getting ready to attend. Today, we're actually at War Memorial that's going on right now. Ms. Lee was there all morning and she stopped over so that she can answer some questions and speak on our, our high school career day information as she has. You go to the next slide. So we have an EMS recruitment incentive program currently that's within the Fire Department. As you can see, we offer $7,500 as a bonus. It's paid out over three payments. It shows our starting salaries compared to our neighboring counties and jurisdictions. We do have a disparity there. I think through negotiations, we're working on that. The above list, the applications that we've received so far for paramedic and EMT. Keep in mind, we, we have to vet every one of those applications. Some of the folks, they get on the workday, they see the application, they either use the QR code or navigate through the web, they put their information in, but they really don't have the credentials. And in order to do that, they have to go to like BCC or another institution to acquire either an ALS or a BLS certification in order to come in through that route. You go to the next slide. Okay. You could back up one, if you would, just in case if they have any questions for the HR, Human Resources?
Yeah, I do. It's, it's not listed here, but do we, or maybe it is, maybe that's the applications. My thought was how, how we, how we reach out to folks. Of course, I think there are significant opportunities using or leveraging social media and targeting using social media.
Yes, sir.
Do we do that now? How do we do it?
Yes, sir. We actually, with, with respect to this current EMS recruitment drive, I was able to interface with Chief Matt, who's in charge of the EMS division. And he was able to reach out to MEMS and get our QR codes for EMS, ALS and BLS applications onto their website. So it went out statewide through the entire state. Everybody that, that is a provider knew that we were hiring, that we had the bonus and that we were accepting applications.
Yeah, my, my thought is certainly that, but I'm thinking even so far as ads, leveraging ads, we could, you know, in advance of an event, kind of juice the returns if we let folks. folks know that we're going to be at a certain place at a certain time, or that a deadline is coming up for one of our application deadlines and we want folks to apply. And, you know, ads on social media are relatively cheap for the, you know.
Our PIO has integrated, I believe, the ads through all the city websites that were available, and as well as ours, on Facebook, Instagram, and every other social media account that we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you. Where are we relative, so I know one of the other challenges with EMS is there's private ambulance.
Yes, sir.
Where are we relative in pay to most of the private providers?
I would ask Chief Matt to talk on that, because we actually contract some private ambulance companies, if that's okay?
Good afternoon, Councilman Burnett. Could you repeat your question?
So on the pay chart, I know one of the challenges, obviously you're comparing to other jurisdictions, other municipalities, but I know one of the other challenges is private ambulance companies as well, hiring EMTs and paramedics.
Correct. So the going rate, the last time I checked, was they're paying, you're asking what the pay rate is for them? They're paying them by the hour, $25 hours an hour. The ones that we use, they actually just 1099 their people, so they don't get the benefits and the insurance. Their commercial services, we call them SURGE, they're the ability of us to make sure we can maintain our current level of service. They fill the gaps where we need it. So we work on them closely. And some of the, you know, future iterations of some of the stuff we're going to talk about later, you would want one of those like they do in DC. If you call like a nurse in the 911 center, it's a low priority call, they can either call for like an Uber, Lyft, or they'll send a commercial to take somebody to an urgent care center or something like that. That's a few iterations down the road, but that's where we're heading.
I'm going to turn the floor over to Chief Shiloh, our Director of Training.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Deputy Chief Laura Shiloh, I'm the Director of Training for the City Fire Department. You can go to the next slide. Currently, we have one recruit class of EMT firefighters in. They started February the 28th. We started with 61, we're down to 57. The two groups that you see there, A and B, and the differences in their operational dates and graduation dates, some people do come in already with an EMT certification or a paramedic certification. They may not want to go that route to be hired, they want to come in as firefighters. So that's the difference in those two groups. The ones that already have EMT, we can get them through much quicker. So we have that down to about 18 weeks if they already have their EMT. If they don't, and we have to give them their EMT, that's 32 weeks. You can go to the next one. This is a chart just showing the type of training that we're delivering to our field units every day. It also breaks down how many people we train in each session. The two-in-one training, like Chief I'd mentioned, it's usually two engines and one truck. We'll do AM and PM. When we change topics, which we do every year to 18 months, based on whether we can get everyone through, we change the topic. Some topics are all day long, some are broken into two sessions in a day, and depending on that is how many instructors we'll have. Tuesdays, we're doing focus trainings, fire officer command and simulations with a semi-share program. We have battalion chiefs come out, they'll do a simulation, they're put through a SIM, they actually pull up to the Bay area, they have a screen, we have role players. Fire communications dispatchers are also involved in that training. Their battalion texts are incorporated into it, it's pretty realistic. We're able to get usually two sessions through. There are days when we can get three, and it has really done a lot of good for our incident commanders. We do plan to expand that. We're doing captains as well, we do EMS command staff as well. And then Wednesdays is our truck operations class. Thursdays, we usually fill in with anybody who hasn't had their initial bailout training. And then Fridays, we've given initial bailout to the majority of the membership, and now we're doing annual recertification because it's such a perishable skill. You can go to the next one. These outline some of our higher priority trainings that have been ongoing, some were in development during some of our line-of-duty deaths. The rapid intervention training, the incident command training that I just mentioned, also May Day training and professional development. We had started that in FY '20 and have increased that because we didn't have a lot of command-level training. So that has increased quite a bit over the last four years. You can go to the next one. We've incorporated a building construction class, and then this new optimizing human performance under high-stress situations, we introduced that during our officer development training. It was a one-day training, it was very well-received. So with a new grant, we are delivering that. It's a five-day-long course for our officers, and it addresses the human performance and how to really focus on high stress and how to function and optimize your performance. We can go to the next one. This just outlines just our weekly training, I'm sorry. This is just extra training that we're responsible for during the year. We do HOES testing for all of the department. We're also going to incorporate with logistics, our preventive maintenance for all of our breathing apparatus. And then our additional training that we're responsible for that comes up on any given day, defensive driving certification, also return-to-duty evaluations if a member's out of the field, out of operations for six months, they'll have to come through the academy before they're cleared to go back to their regular duties. And then our driving approvals for pump operators and EVDs, they get cleared through the academy. You can go to the next one. These are some state courses, they're state certifications through the Maryland Fire Rescue Institute that are delivered, the first box are promotional, they're promotional requirements. So we offer those twice biannually, usually right before a promotional exam. The other courses are not specifically required for promotion, however, we do offer those other ones, the Fire Instructor II, Incident Safety Officer, and the Inspector I and II classes. The newly developed grant-funded classes, the Advanced Firefighter Removal Class is a four-day class, and it focuses, it's based off of previous line-of-duty deaths going back to 1955, and it is a very, very physically demanding course, and it's to help our firefighters with firefighter removal from being trapped in a dwelling. The optimizing human performance in high stress, I just mentioned, building construction and the fire dynamics. These are some other ancillary responsibilities, and the special projects. We have been hosting Camp Spark since 2018. New apparatus, when we get new apparatus, we familiarize the companies that are getting it. We're responsible for physical ability testing, and then forcible entry, and the Fire Ops 101 that you all are familiar with. You can go to the next one. That's it. Any questions? Great. Thank you.
You go to the next slide. Thank you very much for allowing us to present on behalf of the Administration for the Ball of Mercy Power Department.
Chief Matt, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Burnett, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking the time to speak with us today and sharing some of our, really some of the things we've evolved with together. We've actually did a lot of work surrounding a lot of these real-time dashboards that we use. We're going to go through some of those performance metrics. I know you're very data-driven, we make, we do a lot of data-driven decision-making here. And then I was going to close, we have some positive notes, we have some real good successes, and we're trying some new stuff coming up in the near future I was going to share today, too. I have a little video clip in there, too, where they were actually filming some of our crews. So, okay, without further ado, we're going to do our EMS community metrics. This is just a snapshot of quarter four, where it goes over our most common and prevalent type of call that we do. If you don't know the CAD codes, it's difficult, the six code would be a shortness of breath or respiratory distress. Anytime you see those 26 codes, that's just, I'm sick. That's like our highest, most frequent low-acuity call that we use. Thirty-two card is a person down, and then at the very end, 31 means unconscious, or a four card is for an assault and battery. This is a good view, that we look at our incidents responses, and we also track our responses to overdoses by the quarter. We actually track that on a daily basis. And what I'm going to do is go through our heat maps that we discussed, that we always go through each presentation. First one is the highest incidence of traffic incidents in quarter four, 2023. Just ran out the top five. Remember downtown Seton Hill is always going to come up high because we have such an influx of people during the week, that's where you're going to have the most. We also do the calls per 1,000 residents, which gets it a little more realistic. Downtown comes in number one, followed by Greenmount East, Popleton, Old Town Middle East, and then it closes out the top five with Clinton Berea. At 58 total calls, roughly 7.65 per 1,000 residents. The next map that we track in quarter four is our cardiac arrest data. During quarter four of 2023, Madison East End had the highest incidents per 1,000 of the population, or a total of 26 cardiac arrests. That works out to be 4.27 per 1,000 residents. Madison East End was followed by Upton Drew Hill at 3.59, Greenmount East at 3.31, Southwest Baltimore at 42 or 3.18 per 1,000. Ran out the top five is Old Town Middle East at 3.1 per 1,000 of the population. Next is sick cases. Like all calls and sick cases, low-acuity calls, these are the calls that we really try to target with a lot of our innovations that we're doing. The idea is to do different things with these low-acuity calls. We have roughly 30,000 low-acuity calls a year. In quarter four, sick cases, the most prevalent area was downtown at 283, followed by Old Town Middle East at 241, Sandtown Winchester Harlem Park at 240, and then Harbor East Little Italy at 106, followed closely by Washington Village and Pig Town. The next slide that we go over is our trauma for quarter four, 2023. The number-one area for trauma in this quarter is Clifton, Berea, and East Baltimore, that had a total of 16 incidents, or 2.11 per 1,000 of the residents, followed by southeastern, Southern Park Heights at 21 incidents, or 1.97 per 1,000, Washington Village, Pig Town, and then the top five, the last one, top five, is Greater Mondamen at 15 incidents, or 1.74 per 1,000 of the residents. Opioid?
Chief Matt?
Yes, sir.
Quick question, do we keep track of the sort of average amount of time that a unit is out of service to respond to any one of these? I would imagine a traffic, a traffic call takes much more time than a sick case, but maybe not.
Quite honestly, we do track that very aggressively. There's a million variables. Yeah, it's a lot more with the traffic accident, we have to put somebody on the backboard, the collar and so forth. Then we have other things that get in the middle of, like hospital offload. A low-acuity call is going to be a lot harder. Sometimes they're faster, they might say just put somebody in a wheelchair to the waiting room. So there's a lot of variables in there. We do watch it closely. Some of the later slides I'll show you, we try to watch our time to critical calls, that's a really important factor. The low-acuity calls, quite honestly, the lower acuity or low-priority calls, they need to wait. We need to get the higher-acuity stuff out there. So that's what we're trying to do with that data.
Okay, thank you.
The opioid quarter four, we're doing a lot of stuff surrounding our opioid outreach, I'm going to get to that a little bit later, but I'll just give you the data. For quarter four of 2023, number one in that area was Madison East End at a total of 20 incidents, or 3.28 per 1,000. The next is Upton Drew Hill at 29 incidents, or 3.25 per 1,000 of the population. Next, it's downtown Seton Hill, followed by Greenmount East, and then Clifton Berea at 13 incidents, or 1.72 per 1,000 of the population. Low acuity, that's again those low-acuity or sick cases that we're trying to talk about, we're trying to address. In quarter four, 2023, downtown Seton Hill once again is number one, with 618 incidents. Next is Old Town Middle East at 447, followed by Pig Town, I'm sorry, Washington Village, Pig Town, Pimlico, and then Upton Drew Heights at 346. All EMS, by the way, this is my last map. All EMS incidents for quarter four, 2023, the number-one area is downtown Seton Hill once again for the people that influx to downtown. There was a total of 1,465 EMS incidents in quarter four, which worked out to be 155 incidents per 1,000 of the population. They're followed by Upton Drew Heights at 1,071, Old Town Middle East at 117 per 1,000 of population, Washington Village at 592, and then the last of the top five would be Sandtown Winchester at 1,086 calls total, but per 1,000 of the residents, that works out to be 103. I like this graphic. What we try to do is tell you our top five advanced life support calls in the fourth quarter, and then the basic life support of the low-acuity type calls. For quarter four, the most prevalent advanced life support call was a breathing problem, which is those six cards that we were talking about before. Unknown person down, that could be something really bad, or it could be nothing, it's one of those ones you just don't know. Sick abdominal breathing, abnormal breathing, which is a higher-acuity call. Sick not alert, that means you're unconscious, and then unconscious trouble breathing, which ran out the top at 894 incidents in that quarter. On the basic life support side, you're going to see a lot of the sick, that's those 26 cards I talked about, as well as vehicle accidents. The number-one is 26 Alpha, there's 1,610 of those. Vehicle accidents, there was 11, just over 1,100 in the fourth quarter. A different type of sick call was 482. Abdominal pain, 460, followed by falls, people that trip and fall, and that accounted for 406 calls during the fourth quarter. This is a snapshot from one of our graphs that we use on Power BI that looks at our calls by the quarter. I just highlighted a couple of things, and I'm going to get into them a little bit later. Remember, there's incidents, responses, and transports. There's a unique incident number for every call. Responses, there can be multiple people in one incident, that's where you get that higher response number, and then of course, transport number. In quarter four, we had 39,969 unique incidents. Responses was just, almost all of that was 68,064, that means all the units that responded to that particular call. This is our operational metrics dashboard that we use, that's a good visual representation of what we're looking at with that. It highlights your incidents, responses, as well as transports by that period. It also tracks them by the month, so you can look for different changes going up and down. It also talks about response time to serious calls or sensitive calls. That's your chest pain, shortness of breath, heart attack type calls. Our median time on that is running right about eight minutes, 90th percentile was 11. The next EMS operational metric, performance metric, talks about median suppression wait times. Our median time is about 8.4 minutes. Remember, that suppression, we're one big team, they a lot of times fill the gap, they're the initial person to respond and provide initial care, followed by the advanced life support unit if needed. support unit if this, if needed. The 90th percentile all wait time in that quarter is 27 minutes, so it did go down. The next operational medic goes over our offload time. Dr. Lawner, in a little bit, a couple of slides, has a little better video infographic that, that displays it a lot better. I will tell you, all in all, our offload time has been improving significantly from last year. I would say that we're averaging in this, in this region between 45 and 50 minutes. A year ago, it was much higher than that. So all in all, it's trended down, so. This is EMS alternative destination metrics. We're going to cover this in a little bit, in a little more detail. The goal with, the problem and goal that we're having with alternative destinations, we should take more people there than they call us to bring out of there, and we're having a disparity with that right now. And Dr. Lawner's going to highlight that when he gets there in just a moment. Dr. Lawner, you want to talk about that slide?
Good afternoon. Ben Lawner, emergency and EMS physician, and happy to serve as the medical director of Baltimore City Fire Department. Thanks again for the opportunity, as always. It's always appreciated to delve a little bit deeper into some of these, some of these goals. So with respect to, if you go to the, the other slide, an alternative destination, I apologize, one slide back. So this is part of the overall, and I think we've talked about this, with respect to how we deliver 911 services, and I think we are all on the same page, that the, the more we are accurate with respect to determining the acuity, the better we can allocate resources. We highlight this to show us, this is a small part of an overall strategy, and quite honestly, alternative destination means transporting somebody to other than a hospital. So there's not a lot of alternative destinations, nor is there a lot of uptake, but we do utilize what's called the stabilization center, and that's reflected in the top left corner. We also monitor our transports from these alternative destinations, and it's not surprisingly, we mentioned a bunch about public health here, is that the utilization and the need is quite large. So we transport 13, and then we retrieve about 46 from those locations. And that is not a negative, it just, it indicates that a lot of our patients with respect to access and healthcare literacy and linkage to care, it's a significant demand. So we do keep tabs on alternative destination, and I'm hopeful that the more we triage the calls appropriately, we can look at other destinations. And I will talk a little bit more about this and how we kind of integrate alternative destinations into an overall strategy of diversion, or as we like to say, more appropriate utilization. We can go to the next slide. Chief Matts alluded to this, excuse me. This is great in that the city council, mayor's office, MIMS, which is our regulatory body, we have collaborated, and despite the fact that this is a, as we all know, a high-demand jurisdiction, it's important to note that the median and 90th percentile offload times are decreasing. Now, this is, again, part of an overall strategy. The thought is, if you liberate an ambulance sooner from a hospital, and this also is highlighted in the previous discussion, you'll have more ambulances on the road. MIMS does define a standard of care, which is again, our regulatory body of about 20 minutes, and it's good to see that we are continuing this trend. This is an important trend that we keep eyes on, not only quarterly, but also throughout, throughout a various amount of other time trends. We can go to the next slide. This slide indicates a lot of the things that are ongoing, and I think it's important in this forum to have visibility on all the things that we are doing, because they all, I think, relate to a larger whole. So TELL 911 is the sanction process by which any citizen, regardless of their ability to pay, if it's low acuity, this will go to a board-certified emergency physician. And for the lower acuity calls, we are hopeful that that physician will be able to either mitigate the complaint or direct to an alternative destination. That is set to go live in a pilot area with two of our EMS districts on April 1st. The date was not chosen to, to add any humor to that, but we do hope that April Fools will bring, will bring together another opportunity to make our units more available. I know we've previously discussed that in this forum. This is in use in 12 or 13 other jurisdictions and has been shown to mitigate some call volume issues. The nurse navigation line is an extremely important part, and that's basically lending our 911 specialists, Ms. Reddick and her crew. It allows them another opportunity to offload the burden of the lower acuity requests. That request for proposal has been concluded, and we will be participating with the, the city offices on grading that RFP, so hopefully the implementation timeline is closer. And then we've talked a little bit about the rest of them, but, but the point of this slide is to highlight that it is not any one thing that is going to really help with 911 overcrowding, but these are things that are under the fire department's purview that we will continually pursue, and we are making progress. We can go to the next slide.
I just want to piggyback behind what Dr. Lawner's talking about with regard to TELL 911. Basically, what we're doing is we're putting iPads in the field with our units in those two areas. If they go into a particular call, it's low acuity, and it's appropriate, it meets the check switch, we'll be able to actually do HIPAA compliant FaceTime with the doctor, and that physician can, can order prescriptions if appropriate and send them to there. They can order durable medical equipment for these people. So it's, it's a great option, it's a nice tool in our toolbox. The other couple of things I wanted to say is, we're also, and it isn't on this slide, on April 8th, we're looking at piloting an advanced life support chase car. What does that do? That's where I put a bunch of paramedics in a car, and they're able to go out and upgrade the high-acuity call where they need the higher level providers. So they go together, they go to the location where they, whether it's a basic life support unit or not, we're able to go in, upgrade, and then eventually get rid of, you know, help those people along to the hospital. We're going to start, the tentative date on that is 4/8. We're going to work from 7:00 to 7:00 in the morning, and we're going to, that's our pilot with that one unit, and we're going to see how it goes. Hopefully it's successful, it is. Chief Wallace and I have both done chase car model before. It's not infrequent, it's a very, very common thing. It's also a way to maximize our paramedic usage.
Thank you, Chief Matts. This is also part of our other larger strategy. Now, the buprenorphine program, and I know we, we've mentioned this briefly, this links citizens who are suffering the sequelae of overdose to much-needed community resources. We, I think I am a little bit skeptical in terms of how this will mitigate call volume, but the most important thing of this, and I know, I know Councilman Cohen has championed this as well, is that this positions Baltimore City Fire Department paramedics and EMTs to be in a better position to link to care. So the, the shining, I think, goal, and the shining gem of this program is the ability to link Baltimore City Fire Department to both 988 and overdose opioid harm reduction services in the community. So that is something I think that will continue to grow. And just like with TELL 911, we will report that out in a real-time dashboard, so these are things which we will report out in metrics once they are operationalized. The behavioral health diversion is a little bit exciting. As you may recall, as part of the consent decree, we were tasked with, to work with the police department to minimize police response to victims of, or people in mental health crisis. I think the largest news of this is that the 911 clinician, the, the mental health clinician has been hired. We are working with the sponsoring organizations and stakeholders to have them integrated into the 911 call-taking process, also in compliance with the Maryland Mental Health Act. Minors age 12 and older, without any concurrent medical complaints, and again, when I say medical complaints, that's when you call 911, if you don't have any chest pain, shortness of breath, bleeding, loss of consciousness, we will be able to divert or connect those patients in need of crisis to behavioral health resources. That is a very significant, I think, development, and we will continue to expand that program as quality assurance and capacity allows. This is a dashboard, and again, if you want any of this data, I am happy to report, this is kind of quarterly, and this is for specific, specific parts of the program as a snapshot. So I'm happy to take some of this offline. With behavioral health diversion, right now, we are limited by certain call types, but we are seeing an increase in the amount of calls that we are able to, what's called co-notify, where we actually talk to 911. So when we first started this program, the amount of ineligible calls, because patients were either violent, or they didn't meet criteria, was upwards of 90%. And happy to report that at least as of the last time we completed it in January, we are pushing the number of ineligible calls lower. And that's, that's one of the data components that we want to see. So behavioral health has continued to expand, and that is another multidisciplinary city organization, or collaboration, I should say. That is another graph that tells us, we, we kind of need, we have a little bit of work to do. So this is the difference between attempt diversion and missed opportunities. And so we have a monthly QA team where we actually work with a behavioral health program manager, which is recently on-boarded by the mayor's office, and we identify those gaps where we are either not diverting, or we missed an opportunity. So we surveil those as well with our quality assurance calls and take actions in order to increase the amount of eligible diversions. That is also reported on a dashboard. You can go to the next slide, too. Alternative destination, again, we, we talked about this, small part of a larger strategy. ET3 was the kind of enhanced treatment, transport, and triage. That is no longer funded, I know, by Medicare, but we still look at this, and, and what I'm hoping to do is, as we onboard this nurse navigation line, the amount of alternative destinations, meaning licensed and capable facilities other than an emergency department, will also grow exponentially. Meaning, once you get the triage correct, and we know that somebody has, let's say, a bona fide low-acuity need, we can then transport them as they do in our, to our neighbors in the south, to federally qualified healthcare centers and other, other organizations. All right. So this is again, another graphics that's showing you the opportunities we have for alternative destinations, one, one part of an overall strategy. I don't have much else to say about that. For clinical metrics, my goal here is to provide a high-level overview. As we know, we have certainly fire suppression, the delivery of emergency medical service care are two of the cornerstone missions of the Baltimore City Fire Department. So happy to report that we are aligning with the national EMS quality assurance metrics. These are national metrics that, when you look at any fire service or any service that is tasked with municipal delivery of EMS, we actually look at those high-priority calls, we rank them accordingly, and we report out on the data. We completed a 12-lead EKG training. We've also engaged with the support of Chief Wallace and Chief Matts. We've got a much more robust quality assurance, and we have four dedicated lieutenants. They have field days where they can take problems that we identify through the quality improvement process and work on in the street. And then finally, there are a couple of things which we have been, despite the high call volume, I think you saw annually, we have like over 180,000 requests for service. There are certain high-acuity calls that we are committed to 100% review, and that includes a heart attack, that includes the use of ketamine, and that's by MIMS legislation, and also anytime we do advanced airway intervention. So we are in line with some of the high-performing jurisdictions with respect to oversight. I will, what I will do for clinical metrics is, since this is a little bit complicated, but you see these because these are, these show up in the national EMS quality assurance metric, I will just highlight the kind of things that are very important, and then any salient progress points. So with respect to stroke, we obviously want to document what we call stroke mimics. So everybody that is identified as a stroke, we want to check the blood sugar, and we want to get them to the correct location. And that unbelievably, I think you mentioned, Councilman Conway, you said, we have, we are, we're very blessed and fortunate to have a lot of medical facilities. The challenge in the city is that each emergency department has different capabilities. So there are certain hospitals that offer a higher level of stroke care, and we track every day, as a matter of fact, whether or not the patients with the most acute strokes get to the most comprehensive stroke centers. So we can go to the next slide. And feel free to interrupt if there are any specific metrics. We're going to talk a lot, or in a focused manner, about cardiac arrest. That is one of the high, the high-visibility focus areas, and we are compliant with a lot of those CARES metrics. We, we basically look at airways, we look at whether we measure the patient's return of spontaneous circulation, and I will have those reported out for you on a separate We can go to the next slide, too, for cardiac arrest. All right. So we are collaborating with a, we did have a Johns Hopkins School of Public Health intern, and that internship has ended, so we are now working with them to recruit and retain another intern. The benefit of that was basically, there was a big focus on health disparity and where we can actually guide our population health resources. Meaning, if you find out, which is not a surprise, that cardiac arrest disproportionately affects areas of low income, you can certainly target events accordingly, and we have a report that we submitted for approval and peer-reviewed publication, which actually looks at how we can tailor our efforts to serve the citizens that may benefit the most from those. Now, cardiac arrest is one of those things that we are required to report to national databases, and credit goes to, to Neera Reddick and her organization. You can see that on the left, this is basically how fast we turn out 911 calls. We also look at identifying the calls appropriately, and we compare with national data. So the trends with respect to the 911 portion of it are actually, are good to report, that's certainly positive. I think there is always an opportunity with the population to recognize cardiac arrest earlier, so that's another continued focus area. If you look at cardiac arrest from survival, and this is something where, on the next slide, this is again, something I know you've heard me talk about, I feel, I feel very strongly that this is a good indicator of not only how we serve the population, but some community opportunities is, on the left, is basically the Baltimore City Fire Department's statistics. We are benchmarked, benchmarked nationally, as well as with neighboring jurisdictions. And I want to call your attention to, if you look at about the CPR, you see bystander intervention rate. Now, this is something that is, this is a very sort of complex data point. It essentially measures what percentage of cardiac arrests are intervened on. Meaning, we can have all the suppression, advanced life support, and basic life support at our disposal, but if we don't have people performing the appropriate bystander care, meaning the lay citizens, this is an opportunity that directly affects survival. So we are continually engaged with not only the fire department, but our next task force meeting will be with the police to get out the word, to talk about how we can increase the provision of bystander CPR. This deals a lot with demographics. I'm also pleased to report that the last quarter, we were below 20%. So we are seeing a slight uptick. If you look at this last quarter, we are now at, I believe, 26%. That is still, in my opinion, a target for improvement, and we will work with not only our stakeholders in population health, but also neighboring jurisdictions to get that number increased and to push out more awareness.
So the next part of the presentation is talking about the initiative we started really on July the 11th of this past year. They've done some really fascinating work. Once we get done a short little minute and a half presentation that we're going to show you, we got some exciting data, and we've had some finds, we've got enough data now we can start to make some assumptions, so.
So we're at one of our locations that we frequent on a daily basis, but we find people sitting here that may have either shot up before we got here, used drugs before we got here, or about to use drugs. We try to come in and educate them on a use of Narcan, and we offer them things, and they can actually do programs, rehab centers, if they're homeless, get them homeless shelters. So I mean, if you look around, it's not the best place that you want to be, but this is where they are. So you got to come where they are to actually get them what they need.
Good afternoon. My name is VJ. I just want to, I just want to let people out there know that despite a problem with their birthday, and they, they do what they're supposed to do. They're always on the job, they always come to the neighborhood to make sure we have necessities and the things that we need to stay alive. And we really appreciate what they do.
Yep, I've met them quite a few times, and every time, they've been extremely helpful. They've come out with Narcan, which is important for this community out here, water, they've come out with information on resources that these people, you know, really, really need, places to go, where to get healthcare, what to do in emergency situations, and, you know, the small stuff, even like the gummies and the water, kind of makes, makes people's day. So every time they come out here with a smile, and it's been, yeah, seen, well-received, and everyone's happy to see them, so.
Good afternoon. Deputy Chief EMS Administration Timothy Cullen. I'll be providing an update on our population health program today. Our community paramedic unit's been operational for eight months now. I'll be presenting some data highlights from that eight-month period, including an analysis we were, we performed to see if some of our efforts has impacted our 911 incidents for suspected opioid use. The unit's purpose is patient and community support, with our focus being on suspected opioid use. Our EMS and suppression units, they handle the emergencies, and our unit, we provide after-care, after-incident support. So far, patient contact highlights 222 during emergency incidents, and to date, we've supported over 6,000 non-patient contacts. That includes patients' family members, community members, in areas of suspected opioid use and bystanders who witnessed or were involved in an overdose incident. We also attempt to assist our high utilizers, which is identified by a patient who calls 911 five or more times in a three-month period. These are, these are extremely high, complex cases. The fire department had 251 patients identified as high utilizers, accounting for 1,937 calls in the last quarter. Chairman Conway, at the last, at the last hearing, you posed the question, how many of our high utilizers are homeless? We estimate at least 17% of those 251 are homeless, and we went back, tracked a little bit before that, it varies from between 17 to 30%. Next slide, please. This is an overview of our, of our outreach data. I'd like to highlight the teams. This is an overview of our, of our outreach data. I'd like to highlight the team's efforts in population health awareness totals. So this is our on-the-scene, real-time, post-incident community awareness training, and where we distribute our leave-behind Narcan kits, resources, and training. So far, since July, 828 total of events, equaling about 136 hours of on-scene training. Also, fentanyl test strips, we've distributed 259. Food, water, blankets, gloves, wound care kits. A lot of our patients that, that do utilize have wound, have wound problems, wound issues. We've distributed about 1,061 of those. And then also, I want to highlight our outside agency program referrals of 142. So this is our connection to care and resources for our patients. It includes referrals of social work, treatment centers, housing, peer recovery services. Councilman Cohen mentioned the services at the Enoch Pratt Library, which we do utilize. We work with them, we refer our patients to them, their resources, including the Peer Navigators Program. Next slide, please. So this is the program's biggest initiative, our leave-behind naloxone kit distribution. In, in just eight months, we distributed 5,821 kits, which totals over 11,692 doses. To date, we're probably over two, or over 6,000 kits. Next slide, please. This slide provides a map of the distribution sites until mid-February. We did a primary analysis on the effect of our leave-behind efforts compared to emergency incidents involving suspected opioid use. Next slide, please. As you can see on this map, in the Pennsylvania Avenue Target area, we analyzed overdose incidents within a two, a .25 mile diameter of a distribution site, 30 days before and 30 days after, and the data reflects a decrease in incidence after the leave-behind drops within this focus area. Next slide. And then the next data, dataset reflects a negative correlation in incidents per week involving suspected opioid use when compared to our leave-behind Narcan efforts. There, you can see a decline. Chief Matts?
Sure. So some preliminary evaluation by the data team. We actually looked at these targeted areas that we were using the heat maps, and we've noticed that there is a 29 percent decrease in overdose incidence in 30 days prior to 30 days after we leave the kits behind in a half-mile radius, which is, and, and another analysis we did, we just recently did, we did the citywide analysis for opioid responses, and we've noticed an 18 percent reduction in the same timeframe from last year that this has been out. So I think it's pretty statistically significant. Obviously, it's just part of the help. We're trying to get the kits out there. We also are doing education. And by the way, the reason the education is so high, MIMs requires, we can't just give kits out. You have to give the kits out, you have to do training at that time. That's why the incidents and the awareness events are so high. We do the education, we do the training and distribution. We're starting to get into the treatment with the stabilization center and the buprenorphine program we're just rolling out. So there's a lot of different pans in the fry, but I, I could say it, at this point, it looks very successful in their efforts, so.
I just wanted to make sure I got the numbers. You said a 30 percent roughly decrease?
Yes, sir. 29 percent decrease. And those targeted half-mile areas where they distribute, 30 days prior, and they do 30 days after they do the kit, and they're finding there's a 29 percent reduction in those targeted areas. Citywide, we have an 18 percent reduction.
That is huge. That's huge.
So we're still looking at it closely, but I think it really, it speaks to the program, to the leadership of the program. Apparently, it looks like it's making an effect. You could see the citizens, that was Pennsylvania road corridors where they were, where they did the film, so.
Yeah. And curious, how many kit drops are we talking about? Like, in the world, are we talking a couple dozen, or are we talking 100-plus? What do we?
In.
In the instances that we've seen, that 30 percent decrease for roughly 30 days?
It's, they look, Jacob, it's thousands, wasn't it? Thousands of incidents?
The question is, I'm, I'm trying to get an assessment of how many kits we would typically drop in order to see that kind of decrease for a 30-day period.
To date, like, like Chief Cullen had said, we've dropped right about 6,000 kits. Every kit has two doses of Narcan in it. So they're on the street. We're noticing a difference. I know some of the crews told them when they were Pennsylvania North, they're starting to recognize people, and they come up and say, hey, I use my kit, can I get another one from you? They do education at that time. Like I said, they're giving out, every time we give out a kit, it's in a brown paper, but like a lunch bag, so it doesn't have any stigma. It's got all the services inside. Sometimes it has fentanyl test strips if necessary. They put the kit in there, and then they also offer some ancillary wound kits, food, water. That we were, we learn from people encouraging people in some of the outreach. You want high-calorie, small, like Pop-Tarts, things like that, they're leaving behind as well, so.
That's great. And you said there's information, is there any information in there for drug treatment programs that we refer folks to, or is that included in the kit?
I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot to bring that up. Thank you. So I spoke to Lieutenant Tingler, who's one of their forefront people. They were actually been able to link four to five people just recently that were homeless, substance task, got them into inpatient treatment recently. And then in addition to that, we're also doing outreach to at-risk adults. They were actually able to link four to five adults into some assisted living. They were just living in, you know, terrible conditions. They were able to get them linked up. So they've done some really good work out there. I'm very happy with what they're doing.
That's great. And, and Mr. Chair, I would just add that you saw that, you saw that brief video right there, and, and, and what that shows is, is a desire and willingness, not only of, of employees at the Baltimore City Fire Department, but of the community, to, to be able to, our, our people have a desire to want to connect, but there is that ability in the community, that desire for someone to come out and connect with them. And I think if you, you, you watch that video, and you look at the numbers here, this, this is a program that's yielded results that, that we, I, I'm extraordinarily proud of that team and all the work that they do, as, as I am with the entire department. But this is something that, you know, we as a city, we're, we're showing that, that these types of interventions, they do work. So I just wanted to add that.
I, I just want to commend you guys. This, I'm really glad that we've been doing the program, number one, because I know it's an idea we've been kicking around for almost 10 years now, and that it's actually working. But two, that we did the hard work of actually measuring our progress. Because it's one thing to, to, you know, it's hard enough to do a program, then to successfully do it, but then even to make sure that the effort was worthwhile and that it's worth continuing. I think, you know, the question that we'll need to figure out as a council is, you know, what additional investment is worthwhile, noting that it has proven its value. And, you know, I, I really look forward to that conversation. I don't know if you've considered any asks, additional asks in the budget to either extend or expand the program, but I, you know, I think this is the kind of innovations that we should be looking into to kind of get ahead of our problems, noting that, you know, a big part of our responses are tied to opioid use. So, yeah. And there was a comment made earlier about, from our last meeting, about homeless folks that tend to be frequent utilizers. You said there was roughly 17 percent of folks?
Correct. 17, and then we dug back about a year, between 17 and 30 percent that we can identify. It depends on accurate data, if we have the right address and things like that, but.
And that's 17 percent of the 177?
251.
251.
From this previous quarter, so from December to February. 17 percent of 251 is 49-ish, I think.
So it makes me think a little bit of, you know, if we could find, for roughly 20 percent of our highly, high utilizers, you know, rush them into some sort of housing opportunities, how much that could really help us with tackling our problem. We're looking at one-fifth of the problem for our high utilizers is housing. And if we could find housing for that one-fifth, we could really begin to, you know, ease the burden on some of our operations, so.
Yeah, and, and, and we would agree with that. And I would also just add, I, I think we're at a point now with some of our programs where we've captured enough data that we can show comparable trends, and, and how, you know, with, with housing, with opioid addiction, the numbers that we're showing, just as a department, we've been able to kind of mitigate on, on our level. I, I think they exemplify, you know, bigger, what, what bigger programs would be able to do, and, and how we could really capitalize on that. And, and to your point, finally, the, the call volume that we could help mitigate, just, you know, with our EMS providers alone by, by having a lot of these services. So we're going to continue to track that data, but the trends that we see right now, we believe, are, are very favorable.
Yeah. Any questions, Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, definitely commend the department for this effort. You know, I appreciate you connected with the peers in the libraries. You know, I think one of our challenges in this space is there are silos, and there's a lot of harm reduction work happening in the city of Baltimore, but I've found that it is challenging to, like, bring it all, consolidate it. And I think it's important because, look, what I saw in that video was relationships being formed. And what I have learned about recovery is that the first step in many people's recovery starts with a relationship with someone that they trust, and that's consistent. And that could be a parent, that could be a firefighter, that could be an EMS worker, that could be a teacher, that could be a police officer. It doesn't really matter who it is, but having that relationship is key. And so, you know, would encourage folks to continue to do that, and just continue to make sure it is a consistent presence of the same people on our side, so that folks know those faces and can identify with them, and continue to build relationships. I am interested, and again, want to just appreciate, like, that's a significant drop in, in those numbers in a crisis, you know, in, in a problem that really is a crisis for our city. I mean, make no mistake, we lose three times the amount of people to overdose than we do to homicide, and it is not something that the media picks up or pays as much attention to. It's not in the public discourse the way that violence is, but a thousand of our neighbors we lose each year to this disease. So it's really important. I am curious how you are thinking about, like, the next step of this program, which, to my mind, it's really good to give someone Narcan, it's good to be hooked in with the hospitals and the different programs. To, sort of the question, I think, the chair asked, or someone asked about, like, connection into treatment programs. I'm curious how we're thinking about, you know, we give someone Narcan, they survive, and that's really important and good, but how are we thinking about getting people into long-term recovery?
This is, so I'm sure, I don't want to preclude anybody else's answer, but this is a, a great segue, because if it's not sustainable or coordinated, we've talked about this a lot. So let me first say thank you for mentioning that, because that underscores every component of outreach. And this was, as a matter of fact, one of the first criticisms that we encountered about the naloxone drops, is what's happening to the longer-term problem. So number one, just to give you an example of what's happening, and this is just from my perspective, we have a behavioral health collaborative, which has, and that meets every month with representatives from the mayor's office, 911, the police, all the agencies, healthcare on the spot, and it really is targeted at identifying these issues and breaking those down. So those discussions are happening. I think in the, in the past, it has not technically been always on, like, public safety's radar, for example, linkage to care. So I also want to echo the fact that we are figuring, we are figuring that out with ongoing meetings. In terms of the actual placement, I also want to give a shout-out to 988, because initially, that group was really focused on behavioral health crises. But as we've seen, the locus of all the social determinants of health is opioid, you know, addiction, it's housing, and everything else. So we are working with them to actually get patients in real-time linkage to those resources. And a lot of the mechanics of that are addressed at those meetings. So I couldn't agree with you more, and, and I'm glad you mentioned that.
I would just echo what, what Dr. Loner said, a couple of things, though. You're right about the silos. It's been noticed. We've been doing a lot of, of joint-agency task force for a lot of, because, let's face it, in those neighborhoods where you're going to have high overdoses, you're probably going to have violence and so, so forth going on there. We, we've mobilized a couple of joint-agency task force recently with health, BPD, the human trafficking task force was in there as well. So we're working on that end. We're also working on treatment with buprenorphine, which in turn, we would go with 988 to that treatment arena. And then finally, I, I'm reviewing a grant, a SAMSSA grant right now that, that talks about that next piece. That's the piece where we need to help. We need to get that other service, those linkages.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we, we've talked about this for a couple of years now, and I think, once again, that, that, there's an opportunity for additional and continued partnership with the health department, and how we strategically use the insights that we have on the ground, especially for this program, to inform how we perform policy at the health department going forward, and where we put in resources, apply for grants. But, you know, at the end of the day, the hope here is not just to save a life for a day. We, we need to hopefully get that person off of that addiction forever. And so it starts with trust. It starts with building relationships, and then it evolves into, how can you truly help me never to have to come back to this again? And so, you know, really, really proud of the success you, you guys have had with this program so far, and, you know, look forward to continuing to support it. I appreciate the data, and, you know, I think we should be talking more broadly about this. We should be talking with our sister cities and talking with other folks. I'm sure they're considering things of this sort, but I think this is, this is really groundbreaking work that we're doing here, and more people need to know about the opportunity. I think there is a further evolution available to us, and how we tag people into long-term recovery programs. But this is a big, big, big first step, and I'm, I'm proud of you guys. Just want to say that. Yeah. Any other questions? All right. Appreciate you all. With that, we're going to go into recess. Thank you.